This meeting, I now Cheryl Burke called to order. Madam Clerk?
Good evening, Madam Chair. This meeting is being held as an electronic meeting pursuant to and in compliance with Richmond City Council's ordinance number 2020 dash zero nine three adopted April ninth, two thousand and twenty and extended by ordinance number 2020 dash one eight three adopted August twentieth, two thousand and twenty and by ordinance number 2020 dash two three two adopted December the fourteenth, two thousand and twenty and the school board's resolution approved on April twentieth, two thousand and twenty. Some simultaneous translation is being provided tonight in Spanish via Zoom and the meeting notice contained information by how individuals needing translation services could obtain the service. The meeting notice also stated that the meeting would be a virtual meeting and would be a live stream for the public on the school division's Facebook page and the link was provided. The meeting notice also indicated that the board would not receive public comments in person. However, public comments could be submitted to the school board clerk and the email address for comments was provided. The agenda of the meeting was posted on board docs. After roll call, we will state how many members are participating at the time of roll call. Mrs. Dour.
Ms. Raya White.
President.
Kenya Gibson.
Here.
Jonathan Young.
Present.
Stephanie Rizzi.
Here.
Dr. Harris Mohammed.
Present.
Ms. Cheryl Burke.
Present.
Diane Page. And Ms. Nicole Jones.
Here.
Madam Chair, you have a call.
Thank you so very much and as I announced earlier, Mrs. Dour and Mrs. Page will be joining us shortly. Before we move forward with this work session, Ms. Adasco, would you share with our listeners, please, the new features we have now in place for the live streaming of our meetings?
Absolutely. Good evening, everyone. You'll notice at the the bottom of the Zoom and therefore should also be reflected in the Facebook livestream. The closed captioning, the transcription, that's live to increase accessibility. And then just an additional feature on our website now is a text to speech feature so that parts of the website can be read to you as well as read. And a thank you to our colleague Matthew Stanley for putting those things in place.
Thank you so much for sharing that and again, thank you, Mr. Stanley. Well done. We will move forward as listed. This is a work session, therefore we do not need approval of the agenda. We will move to number two on our listing budgetary items. Discussion of additional recurring revenue from the Commonwealth of Virginia and City of Richmond. Mr. Cameras.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Good evening, everyone. It is wonderful to see you all. As I shared via email earlier in the week, we are proposing to discuss all of the recurring revenue from the city and state tonight, both on the operational side and also on the facility side. And then next week discussing the federal stimulus money. And if the board feels it is necessary to potentially add another budget work session next Tuesday. So I defer to Madam Chair and Vice Chair on that question, perhaps towards the end of our discussion tonight. With all that said, I'm going to share my screen and bring up the presentation from January nineteenth, so bear with me. All right, so as we discussed initially, we are anticipating about nine million, actually it's a little bit closer to ten million in revenue, new revenue from the Commonwealth of Virginia and from the City of Richmond together. So about five million from the city and about four million from the state. Again, that's new revenue on top of what we already receive. And as we have discussed before, this is recurring revenue, so we can depend on these new dollars every year going forward, which makes it particularly suitable for things like raises. The first item that we are proposing to use this revenue for is a two percent raise for all employees. I do want to note that the governor's budget at this point calls for a two percent bonus. Now, the government, now that's a one-time bonus, so that would be money for next year, but then it would not occur again in future years. The governor has said that if revenue at the state level comes in better than expected, that he would be amenable to converting this bonus into a raise. If that were the case, we would likely get a little bit more funding from the state. Regardless, we are proposing to just go ahead and make it a two percent raise, regardless of what ultimately happens at the state level in recognition of the extraordinary work that our employees have been doing for many, many years, but certainly over the past year. I do want to note that while the state is putting money towards this raise, the way raises typically work in Virginia is the state puts forth a portion and then the locality has to match that. And the sort of division of the funding really comes down to the LCI, so that's the local composite index, which drives the sort of division of funding between state and locality. In short, every time we get a raise from the state, Richmond has to bear about two-thirds of the cost of the raise. State gives about a third of it and the locality has to come up with about two-thirds of it. So to do a two percent raise, it's actually closer to about seven million or thereabouts. We, the city and and RPS, need to come up with five point six million of that. So you'll see that represented here as the first item in the list for the recurring funds. So that is the most significant item. Next is two point five million for the annual one point one seven step increase. So as teachers move up each year, they get now a one point one seven percent step increase. And what that means is that their years of service matches their pay. We know that during and after the recession that stopped happening, so teachers were frozen. And you could have a teacher who had five years of experience and a teacher who had ten years of experience and they were at the exact same place because there had been no movement for many years. RPS was able to decompress the teacher salary scales and now also principals and APs, nurses, IAs, custodians over the last few years, so that we now have teachers placed at the right step based on their years of experience. And every year going forward, offering a one point one seven percent increase. I want to note that is in addition to the raise. So this is a question that we often get. The two percent is in addition to the one point one seven percent. A million dollars to cover anticipated increase in healthcare costs. And then finally about seven hundred thousand dollars in transfers, for example, the tuition that we pay to regional schools and other transfers we have to make for for state programs. That brings us to about nine point eight million, which is the the total that we are expecting at this point from the state and the city. Of course, that could shift, but we think that is the best estimate at this time. So with that, let me just pause there. I think we could maybe have a discussion on these and see if we can reach consensus or if there are modifications that the board would like to see on these. And then we can move over to the facility side after we do this. So there, I'll I'll pause, Madam Chair.
Colleagues, are there any questions? We asked that you place your information in the chat box and Mr. Young.
Yes, ma'am. Yes, ma'am, Dr. Harris Mohammed.
Okay. And after that, that's it?
And then Ms. White.
All right, Dr. Mohammed.
Yes, ma'am. Thank you, Madam Chair. Mr. Cameras, is there an opportunity for us to have a a scale where we currently have a master's plus thirty, I believe? Is there an opportunity for us to budget for employees who have doctorates? Not just the one-time master's plus thirty. I think it may be twelve hundred, fourteen hundred dollars. I'm not exactly sure. I would like for us to investigate or search that if it's possible to add that into the budget and and see how many employees in our district currently hold a doctorate degree?
We can certainly look into that and try to assess what the the price tag would be for that. I'm not certain that we know if individuals have doctorates. So there might be a data gathering exercise. Oh, it looks like Ms. Kudasko have additional information, so I will tap her in.
Thank you. Um, I just wanted to note to your point, we do currently offer a stipend, if you will, but it is annual, so it is not a one-time. It's in the approved salary scale and I think you're right, it's twelve hundred or fifteen hundred. So I could certainly get you a list of who was currently receiving that. I'll note just for additional degrees, the stipend is only available if it's not a degree that's required for the position. But I don't believe that a doctorate is required for any of our positions, so I would assume that anyone who is reporting a doctorate would sort of be the totality of that number and I can get that for you.
Appreciate that. Thank you.
Ms. White?
Good evening. I hate to say that me and my colleague were sort of on the same sheet of music. And I wrote, I wanted to know about teachers who actually seek higher education or, you know, go after a certification. And mine was also with masters and doctors and other certification. Is that incentive included in the budget? Because I know there are a lot that probably went for different certifications last year and this year and they have them and they can do other things they can do. You can place them probably in dual roles. So are they receiving anything extra?
Yes, they are. And I'll circulate the salary schedule. So for example, a master's degree for positions where that degree is not required is currently five hundred and seventy-six dollars. There are other basic certificates that when an employee receives that additional compensation, a bachelor's degree, if not required for the position, et cetera. So I'll circulate that salary schedule, which is also on our website for your review.
Thank you, Ms. White.
Madam Burke, Madam Chair, excuse me, can I add one thing? May I add one thing to that to answer Ms. White's question?
Who's speaking?
Hi, Madam Chair, this is Tracy.
Doctor. Yes.
Hi, Ms. White, we also through other funding sources, through some of our asks in the operating budget incentivize and and cover the cost of a reading specialist or math specialist degree as well as in our Title II application that you'll see later this fall. We historically do provide some funds to help staff with other credentials, be that exceptional education credentials or ESL credentials as well.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you so much for answering that. And so those programs are still in place regarding, I know was it last school year, many teachers were able to get their next degree or get certification in reading. There were, it was a cohort. Has that completed? Is that completed?
We will launch another cohort. We have a current cohort and we have plans to continue that cohort as well.
Excellent. Thank you so much. I think Ms. Rizzi was next. Is that correct, Mr. Young?
Yes, ma'am.
All right, Ms. Rizzi, the floor is yours.
Yeah, so I have a question about, you know, the, you know, the Senate Finance Committee just passed the version, at least, of the School Equity and Staffing Act. And that's going to provide some support specialists like psychologists, social workers. I'm wondering if that passes. Does that money that we have got budgeted for those positions get absorbed back into the budget? Or are we going to add additional positions? Because I know our schools could really use, you know, more nurses, social workers and psychologists. So if that passes, I wonder if there's a plan for what will happen. Yeah.
Yes.
That, Mr. Right ahead.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Yes, Mr. Rizzi, if those kinds of things do ultimately get enacted, then we would add to our allocation of support personnel beyond what we already currently have. So I believe the House and Senate put out their versions this Saturday. So I think we'll have a better sense of kind of which side of the legislature is more advantageous. So we can advocate accordingly. And then once they've developed their compromise bill, then I think we'll have a good sense of really what we're looking at. And so we will definitely come back to the board if there are any notable increases with recommendations about how to use those resources. It would be incredible if 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 some of those things pass to be able to provide even more support personnel.
Thank you so much. Mr. Young, who's next?
Yes, ma'am, Ms. Gibson.
All right, Ms. Gibson, the floor is yours.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I wanted to ask specifically about how we're trending on our budget this year. Looking at the the larger budget document that the administration has provided, it looks like in so in fiscal year twenty, that we budgeted, you know, a hundred and sixty-six million for personnel services and those actual costs came in at a hundred and sixty-one million. And I'm wondering, and you know, I think we typically do have a fund balance. So one, I wanted to find out when the administration will be sharing the fund balance breakdown as we've received in prior years. And also to see if there is, you know, what what our anticipation is in terms of the the fund balance from a staffing standpoint and and where we think, you know, what do we think is is driving that specifically in in this current school year?
I believe we will be able to provide that information at our our session next week. I just need to confer with Ms. Braga. I believe she's been calculating all of that.
Very good. Please let the record show Ms. Dour has joined us. Madam Clerk? Good evening, Ms. Dour.
Yes, ma'am.
On our list, Mr. Young? With questions?
Surprisingly, no one yet, Madam Chair.
Well, I'll comment at this time if I may. I am very, very pleased to see that our, I say colleagues, our faculty and staff members will receive a raise beyond just a bonus and that this will be something that will continue. And also I was thinking overall, Mr. Cameras, if you would answer this, in the last three years, if this is approved by the board with the raise in this step, how much, what what's the percentage overall to include this then that our faculty and staff, a generic big number, what will be the percentage of persons that have received or will receive overall a raise?
If the board does enact this two percent, I believe since two thousand and eighteen, it would be nine percent in total. In addition to whenever we decompress the salary, you were getting those one point one seven percent increases. So I do believe for teachers, it would be nine percent plus a couple of years of the step. So so close to ten percent. Of course, they deserve much more.
Absolutely.
We need to continue to push forward, but I do think that's something that the board can be very proud of.
Thank you so much. Thank you. I appreciate that. All right, if there aren't any other questions, we can continue with your report.
Madam Chair?
Yes.
If if I may.
Of course.
Thank, thank you, Madam Chair. Like, like you and all my colleagues extraordinarily proud of what the superintendent just spoke to as relates to your inquiry. And and I should add that if if we are able to adopt a calendar change for for next fiscal year, specifically the proposal that that we are considering would be another opportunity to significantly augment our teacher pay specifically for a teacher that teaches all four intersessions, additional ten thousand dollars a year. So I'm very excited about the opportunity to rightly rightly put more money in most deserved pockets of folks on the front lines who give everything for our students.
Thank you, Mr. Young. I think we have Ms. Gibson that would like to speak again. Ms. Gibson?
Thank you, Madam Chair. I I wanted to ask, you know, as we think about moving into the next school year from a staffing standpoint, you know, certainly recognize that we want to see more nursing staff. I would hope that if the administration could provide a report to show, you know, currently how many full-time nurses we have in in each of our buildings to be able to see where there may be a need and to consider that. I think that's particularly important going into the next school year. And again, wanting to fund that from from where we have those reoccurring dollars. And I also wonder if we might get a report as it pertains to, you know, where where are we at from a staffing level right now? One of the things that we had spoken quite a bit about in the last budget cycle was substitute teachers. And and so I I'd like to get a sense of, you know, how that has been working this year, given the pandemic and and, you know, where we want to go with that. I think that we made some good progress in terms of the day, you know, the day pay rate. But I believe there was still room for improvement with those long-term subs and the the, you know, their salary, particularly in comparison to some of the other districts. I recognize we may not be able to fund that in this cycle, but but I think getting an an accurate overview of of how that's working, what we're seeing in our neighboring school districts. And, you know, so we can see where where we need to be more competitive with the opportunity. Likewise, with transportation, this is something that always is an area where it's very competitive from a salary standpoint. And all of the districts are having, you know, typically struggle with with filling those positions. So I I also would like to see how we're doing from a hiring standpoint with transportation and and how that's looking, you know, from a salary and compensation standpoint in those other districts as well.
Thank you, Ms. Gibson. Let the record show that Ms. Page has joined us. Good evening, Ms. Page.
Good evening.
Thank you. Are there any other speakers, Mr. Young? Mr. Cameras? Is that next?
Yes, ma'am.
Thank you, Mr. Cameras.
Yes, Ms. Gibson, we can provide a report on on those questions at our next session. And I'm thrilled to to share that it does look like with this budget, we will have a nurse at every school, but we can give you the exact allocation and we'll provide the other information as well. If there are no other questions on on these items, I would like to just get a sense from the board. If we're not voting tonight, I know, but is there a general consensus on these items? If so, we can consider them kind of mostly done for now. And we can then move on to the next section. But I don't want to rush you, so I but I did want to just check in and see if there is a general consensus on on these items.
Any discussion? Dr. Shonda Harris Mohammed?
Mr. Cameras, are you asking, is it a general consensus so we can move on to the next section or is that what I'm hearing?
Yes, Dr. Harris Mohammed.
Okay.
It just will help us know if there are significant changes that there's a consensus of the board to to go back and work on or this feels about right. Obviously, we'll have to come back to the whole picture once we're done, but my hope is we can kind of segment our way and kind of check off the box as we make our way through so that we have a sense of of what significant changes need to be made that we can bring back to you.
I'm good. I'd just like to reiterate the question that I added about the separate stipend for a doctorate degree. So yes, I'm I'm ready to move on to the next section.
I'm seeing, Mr. Cameras, overall, I don't know who would, well, I'm making an assumption there. Who would deny anyone getting an opportunity to get a raise? Not this is more money than what's listed. So I'm in agreement with getting the other information, but I think overall, we 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 are in a good place to be able to move on and look forward to the other information listed that I'm sure you all have listed. But so far is receiving this at this point with the, for those persons who just joined us with the nine points, close to ten million dollars, city and state funding for raises, step increases and healthcare. But then we have other questions that we're going to address that regarding certification degrees, fund balance, nurses, staffing levels, transportation, we have that as well, paid cohorts. So I think overall that we're at a good place and ready to move on to the big money.
Madam Chair, Ms. Ms. Gibson requested the opportunity to ask a question.
Yes, Ms. Gibson?
Yes, so I just wanted to. I just wanted to note that.
Carlos, one moment. Carlos, we can hear you.
Oh, you can hear us?
Yeah, so what's going on?
I'm not sure. Give me one second.
Thank you. That's our interpreter.
Yes. So I I wanted to know, I mean, really what we're talking about right now is recurring revenue. And and there are.
Ali, Mr. Ali? Okay. Can you help us with that?
I'm taking that right now.
Thank you. Go ahead, Ms. Gibson.
So so right now we're talking about recurring revenue and and I do agree that those items that have been flagged are are important, we would like to fund, but I I also want to note that there are items on the other list that are recurring items. And and really, that's what we have to figure out, you know, how how that's going to work. So it's not real, I mean, it's kind of separate, but it's it's not completely separate, right? And so and so I I just think that we consider it in totality. And then one other point of distinction or I wanted to request was a breakdown too of the tuition line item. I think in the past, we've seen, you know, you know, how that's allocated in terms of payments to the various programs. And so, you know, I think that would be helpful to see and to share with the public as well.
So you want to see the, that last line on the display we just had, you want to see what the cost would be per?
Yes, in previous years, we've gotten the fund balance and that included too what those various tuition payments were was. And so I think seeing the breakdown for the fund balance and then also, you know, the the breakdown of those tuition payments, I would like to see. Thank you.
Got it. Thank you. All right, no other questions, Mr. Young? We're ready to move on. Superintendent Cameras?
Thank you, Madam Chair. I'm going to jump to the facilities items. Not the ones from the stimulus, the ones that will come from city funding. So I'm going to share my screen again. One second. So this is the list that we briefly looked at when we first presented the budget. As you'll recall, we moved all of the HVAC items over into the stimulus money since that is a windfall that is available for a lot of those items and that's an appropriate expense. Obviously, we can't use the COVID stimulus for bleachers and such. But for all the HVAC and air filtration, that's precisely what it is for. So here is the list. I know we've had some conversation about whether some of these athletic enhancements are appropriate at this time, given COVID and some of the other needs. I know there was some debate within the board and so I would certainly love to hear more from you all about that issue. I also wanted to note, Ms. Gibson, you had asked about the Obama structural issues. We did go back and look at that. That was actually window sashes that needed to be. That was actually window sashes that needed to be replaced, similar to what we had. For Benford and I think Raz. It was not gotten to last year because we only received 4 million from the city in terms of our capital budget. And our request was was much more significant. If if that is something that you and the board feel we want to prioritize. I believe the cost was somewhere on the order of $750,000. So I do want to make sure that we got back to you on that question. I I'm happy to report, though, it is not a, I think it was mislabeled as structural. There's no overarching structural problem with Obama. It's the window sashes, the windows and some of the the plating that goes around it. With that, I'll pause there and and take any questions.
Mr. Young?
Ms. Door?
Thank you, Ms. Door. Floor is yours.
Thank you. I wanted to. Confirm a couple of things. One, the money. Can we use stimulus money on non like on athletic stuff? It seemed I I actually didn't realize that, but that makes sense now that I'm saying it out loud. That you have to use the stimulus money on things like HVAC improvement, air quality, etc. You can't use it on some of the things that are in this budget, but I would just like clarification there. Second comment is a question about how these. This list was put together. I do know from a principal in my district that they were principals were asked. I'm glad to hear that. But, for example, at Thomas Jefferson, I believe that a priority is more on. Updating the the science lab as opposed to the track field, not that both are important, but I that's a sense that I get from the leadership there. So wanted to understand if there is a special athletics budget that we're trying to work through. And then and then kind of ratchet that down. And then I will say, as someone that just learned tennis this year, I love tennis. But it it does feel like it's a lot of money in the athletic budget, specifically for tennis courts, given the kind of. Situation that we're in this year. And so was wondering if you could speak to the priority there. Or like, is there a way to do it cheaper? I don't, yeah.
Madam Chair, may I? Thank you, Ms. Door. As for your first question. The federal government has given us wide latitude, but it must be related to COVID relief. And while I think additional. Exercise and such would 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 certainly be helpful. I think resurfacing tennis courts might be one step too far. So I I think we would not get that approved. As for the prioritization and really like, where does this list come from? It in essence comes from our master list of of all the facilities issues that that need to be addressed. And then Mr. Hathaway has tried to prioritize that list for the most critical items. We did intentionally, though, add in some athletic items this year. In part, as a response, to be frank, to the fact that our students were not able to play organized sports this year. And we thought it was important to be responsive to that and make some additional enhancements. So that when they do come back, they're able to enjoy improved facilities in a number of cases. That said, I I certainly understand the the tension there with with some of the other items. And I do want to make sure I just scroll to the to the other page, because there is more here. Some roof replacements and and other items that have been identified. As for your question about the science labs, I would love to dig into that more. As you noted, we did reach out to principals and ask, you know, what are their high priority items? I I don't know that that one had popped up before, but we'll take a look at that and follow up.
Mr. Young?
Yes, ma'am, yours truly, and then subsequent me, Ms. Page.
All right. Go right ahead.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Two two questions for the superintendent. The first pertains to ADA and I'm, of course, very pleased that we're proposing to allocate. Quarter of million to ADA improvements. My question regards last time. Last time that I looked, we still had some ADA, we still had a balance in our ADA monies. But is that is that no longer correct? Have we spent down those those dollars? I remember our last conversation, we were working feverishly around the clock to spend those dollars. Specifically to accommodate a bathroom blitz and and ADA compliance stalls, etc. But do we know what the what the balance is for that for that ADA account?
Great question. So we were spending it down quite significantly. My understanding, and we're we're working to get clarification on this, is that the council. Allocated additional funds into the ADA line. And so we are working to get absolute certainty on that. And I will try very hard to get that clarity for you all by our next budget work session. So that you can see exactly where we are on that front.
Thank you. Thank you, sir. And Madam Chair, if if I may, just one other. And that this question really is is intended. For for you and my colleagues and to invite some conversation if there's some interest at some point, either this evening or later. But I I'm very excited about the list that the administration has put together and I'm supportive of it. I also would like to encourage some discussion about another project, a big price. Project in full disclosure, but specifically the what we affectionately refer to as the Altra property. And I recognize that that's likely a 30, 40 million dollar project. But just wanted to inquire of my colleagues and the superintendent. If there's some opportunity perhaps this year to put in some good faith money in an effort to encourage. Our partners at the city and state level to perhaps reciprocate. And and further to encourage our partners in private sector and and nonprofits, philanthropists. To recognize that we're very serious about scaling up our current technical education and leveraging that facility. So with that, perhaps this evening, if there's an interest or or if not, sometime at a subsequent meeting. Love to have some conversation around the Altra property and the fit merits, putting in some money. Recognize we don't have the dollars to do the entire thing right now, but perhaps to have some seed money, for lack of better description.
Any comment, Mr. Cameras?
I would be thrilled to put some money aside to begin or to procure. Some design services, you know, potentially architectural, why not? To sort of lay out our vision and then have them kind of do some of the hard work. Like, what would it actually cost to pull this off? And so I would love to be able to do that. I was just wary of, you know, our prioritization of of COVID and trying to be responsive to that. I also need to do further investigation around whether we can use CIP money for that site. And the reason I'm raising that question is because that site is technically owned by a foundation. That is controlled by the school system, but not the school system in and of itself. And so I do need to investigate a little bit further. What are the implications of that in terms of CIP dollars? That being said, to your larger point, yes, I would I would love to be able to set aside some to to get that ball rolling. Again, defer for defer to the board as to whether that rises on the priority list.
If I may follow up as well, I would like to have that conversation later. Because I was thinking that the cost, expect the cost to be closer to 100 million, more than 20 or 30. That's that's what was told the last tour we had. And I think it's maybe we can do something similar that the cover community is doing regarding their gym. Even though the cost is much less, but seeing the facility, every board member that hasn't walked through their facility. It would be great to see that and the potential there, but it's going to be a lot of money. And right now, I'm so happy to see on the list tennis courts, football fields. It's some of our set, the bleachers. Our children should have that. They should have, they shouldn't go to other schools and see first-class big stadiums and up-to-date grounds. Our children deserve that as well, and I'm glad that, Mr. Cameras, you all put that together, knowing that our students have done without their sports. So when they come back, they need, they deserve the best equipment, the best locker rooms, the best not to trip over anything in the flooring. And there's some courts that are in pretty bad shape, as we well know, new nets. Less, I am in favor fully of inside and outside. If we need lighting, children cannot learn well in dim, dark places. I'm surprised to see a couple of schools on, and I guess I'm aging myself, because I remember some of these buildings haven't had lights updated some years ago. So apparently, there's a better level now, I guess LEDs or whatever. But I'm glad to see the playground. I'm surprised to see Old Bee Shepherd because we just restored that. So apparently, the playground wasn't done. Is that what happened there that is here to replace? They should all have the state of the arts. And I can't understand why some of this does not fill in with COVID. Because we've been told that the more fresh air you have and the more that you're outside and the more that you get a chance to. I see some schools in the setting in the city that are open private schools, and as cold as it is, children are outside, sitting down, learning. Well, they they look like they're learning. Okay, I'm not there to assess. But my point with that is, I I wish you would find out if the. Because those are those are classes, educational classes of which our children get credit is credit for as well as electives. Some of the classes are, but that also goes back to the health and physical ed piece. So I I we may be able to work through that. So in response to what Mr. Young stated, yes, I'm 99.9% plus on the building that we were given. However, right now, I'd like to see the money going to taking care of our immediate home first. And then move into that platform, and maybe we can get that partnership as I stated, this cover has gotten in regards to their their. Proposal for their gym that's that's fully covered. So I think Ms. Page was next on the list. Ms. Page?
Yes, Madam Chair.
Go right ahead. Please proceed.
Um, well, my first question was answered because I wanted to know, was this list based on. Priority, you know, need base and Superintendent, he answered that question. With my colleague, Ms. Door, and I'm pleased to see this list. This is a start. It's a drop drop in the bucket, but it's a start. We have so many needs, so many needs. And we know athletics. Is the area that has been neglected for years. Just like a lot of our antiquated buildings, but it goes back to the funding. And yes, I'm in total agreement of this list. Our children, they need experiences and exposure in athletics, provides life skills. So I'm in total support of this list. But also I want to say something about our trio building. I support having that conversation and the possibility of having creating some partnership. But now is probably not the time, because yes, we do have so many other needs due to COVID. But I'm I'm in support of this and yes, let's move forward. And if we have more money allocated to some other places that are in need. So again, thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Page. Mr. Young, who do we have? What's the next list?
Yes, yes, ma'am. It's Ms. Gibson, then Ms. White.
All right, Ms. Gibson, followed by Ms. White.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Well, you know, going back to the discussion about Obama and the the structural update regarding the window sash. I I think it would be helpful to have a representative of the operations and facilities team come and speak more specifically. That, you know, I mean, a a window is an opening to the building, and when you punch a hole through a wall, that's a vulnerable place. And so I window sashes do play a critical role, and I I think it's important to understand. You know, why that was something that was prioritized last year. I understand that that update was made at at Benford. And I just want to make sure that we're equitable in how we're handling those those needs. Likewise, I think it would be helpful, particularly again, as we're thinking about. And this also bleeds into the discussion on the stimulus COVID funds. But if the administration could provide an overview on all of our school building facilities. And then when the HVAC systems have been updated in each of those facilities, just so that we can get a sense of what. That landscape looks like in terms of in terms of those systems. And and also if, you know, our our facilities team can provide us any updates. Whether making those types of updates, you know, how that might impact, you know, our overall energy efficiency. And and operating costs, if, you know, there might be a benefit there by by making some of those changes, I think that would be helpful to know. And then finally, I'm I would like the administration to provide an overview on where we're at with that bathroom blitz. You know, this is something that we've been talking about. And I would like for, you know, both the board and the public to get a sense of, you know, where where we netted out. How many of the bathrooms have been updated? What did those updates look like? And what work do we still have outstanding that we need to do? You know, we need our kids to be able to feel comfortable going in and washing their hands. And and I think that's critical work to do as well. And so getting that update would be helpful as we're determining, you know, we want to make sure that we're, you know, every single thing we want to do. But there's certain things that we just need to do. And before approving a budget, I I want to make sure we have a solid understanding of, you know, if there are any really essential needs. That that may be on the table that should be prioritized. Thank you.
If if I may follow up with Ms. Gibson regarding the bathroom blitz. I think that's excellent, but I also would like to share with each board member. I know we have one board member getting ready to take a tour. Tour your buildings. Whether children are there or not there, touring, I go to every bathroom, every kitchen, flush the toilets. And I guess that's because of having been a principal for years. Look under the toilets, under the whatever, ma'am, so you can see for yourself. Because I've gone in buildings on Monday, the bowl is there. On Wednesday, when I go back, the bowl is off the wall, hanging over. So please, I empower you to check it out. And not not that you don't have free time to do that, but I, if you do one one month and two the next month, take the time. You you have that, you have that right, and you want to see so that when people ask you and your parents ask you or children bring that to you. You can state, you're right, I'm gonna get on it, I'm gonna work on it. Or you can state that, well, it was fixed last week, and I'll make sure it's be it will be repaired. But I empower each of you to walk your buildings. Right now is really a good time since there aren't any children or faculty and staff. And I know I'm volunteering, Mr. Hathaway, but he can always put together a beautiful list of folk to help you out. And area principals, that's that's who I go to. But I because of all these projects that we see, and it seems like the the data, the information changes from day to day. And if you miss a classroom or whatever, the teachers, I want to tell you later, Ms. Burke, you didn't come to my room. You didn't come to my room, you didn't see, I was like, oh, but I thought I was, okay, next time I come in, I need to see the floor plan of the building. So that I don't miss it about it, I can check it all. And sometimes these bigger buildings, elementary buildings, it doesn't take that long, but middle and high schools, it does take longer. But go out there and check it out, and so you can get firsthand knowledge of that. And it will give you some peace. It's giving me peace to be able to do that. And you know what you're working for, and you know what you're working with. So if I may, as a suggestion, Ms. Gibson and everybody, just suggesting it. Mr. Young, who's next?
Yes, ma'am. It's Ms. White, then Ms. Door.
All right, Ms. White, the floor is yours.
Thank you, Madam President, and you are so right about touring your buildings, because I have toured every one of mine. I would like to say, looking at this list. I'm for the actual equipment for the sports and because I was an athlete myself. But I'm looking at returning to school, our students returning to school. And every building up here almost, if it's not a new building, they need windows. The windows don't come up. So where is the ventilation and some, some of the schools need blinds? I don't see that up here. So I would like a list of, I, I, I'm not sure if someone goes into the schools to check the schools. But most of all, our windows are terrible. They need to be replaced. So if our children are returning to school, they will get that ventilation. And I know some of the air conditions, they have the units, they don't have the central air. They have, to make sure that they also work, we need to prioritize what our list looks like. I see that, I, I think I've seen one on here for windows or blinds. But I have three schools and in those three schools, the windows don't come up. So where does these children supposed to get the ventilation? So I'm looking at, I would like a list where someone went in and they actually checked the windows of these schools. Because if you look out the outside of the schools, these windows are terrible. They are terrible. Not only you can't even clean them, they still look, I mean, they've been there for years. So they need to be replaced and they need to be prioritized based on our children returning to school. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. White. And I understand exactly what you're saying regarding the windows. Because at one time in Richmond Public Schools, whenever a window was broken or someone broke into the building, they were replaced with plexiglass. That's why they have that dull finish because it's not real glass. So we do have a lot of buildings with plexiglass. Well, my, and they do need to open the windows. But I know in a lot of schools where the windows are low, they were purposely sealed to keep from people breaking in to get into the building. So however that can work out, I, I'm in full agreement with that, especially with removing that plexiglass. But that should be able to fall under the COVID. Then Mr. Cameras?
Yes, Madam Chair, and I think an important point about calendar is, is, is worth making here. Everything on this list, this is, this would be funded by dollars that would be appropriated by the city.
Right.
Starting July 1st. So anything we want done now would have to come out of the S R funds. And, and now is, is a little bit of an overstatement. We're probably still several weeks away from getting those funds. So I, I just wanted to make sure folks have that in their mind. This, these funds we're talking about right here are appropriated by the city. They become available July 1. The S R fund should be in the next month or so. So things like the HVAC upgrades, or if you wanted to do more windows, it would be ideal to come out of the S R funds. I also, also want to manage expectations. Even if we had all the money in the world, I don't know that there is enough time to replace every window that would need to be replaced prior to the start of the school year. I know, for example, that Benford project took over a year to accomplish. And so let me go back and talk with Mr. Hathaway about if there's a case where a window does not open, is the upgrades that we're making to the HVAC system, along with the bipolar ionization, does that meet a threshold of air quality that we would be comfortable with, that are, that's safe for, for kids and staff? So let me, let me look into that and, and I will bring that information back to the board.
Thank you, thank you. Ms. Door, I think you're next.
Hi, lots of, I agree with a lot of what's been said and I agree with you, Ms. Burke and, and Ms. White, Dr. Harris Mohammed. Also, I tour my buildings with my city council rep, which is also a good practice to make sure that they see and understand what our needs are. And I had two additional thoughts as folks were talking. One is, is there any opportunity with the SF, with the, sorry, not SF, with the stimulus funds to fund? I know we're going to get to it, so it's, but I would just like to put a pin in the fact that we've seen other, someone mentioned kids learning outside. So pavilions, picnic tables, stuff like that, where we can be outside. I think is worth questioning if we have enough money in the budget for that. And then it during, when you mentioned that the Altria building is owned by a nonprofit, it made me, it occurred to me that potentially then if we were to receive funding for rehabilitating it, that it, the funding might not go towards increasing the city's debt capacity. And in that case, as Ms. Burke said, the sort of partnership with external funders, it could be a great opportunity to do a P P A. So anyways, I know we, we had looked into that as a board and it didn't, wasn't really feasible because it would, it would increase the city's debt capacity, debt ceiling and therefore their bond rating. But I wonder, it'd be, I would be interested to know if by the nature that it's owned by a nonprofit organization, if that gives us a little bit more flexibility. Probably another topic for another day, but just a thought.
Point well taken though. Thank you so much. Mr. Young?
Yes, ma'am, Dr. Harris Mohammed, then Ms. Rizzi, then Ms. Page.
Thank you, Dr. Harris Mohammed.
Yes, thank you, Madam Chair. Mr. Cameras, do we know how much money we saved from canceling athletics this year?
I, I don't have that off the top of my head. I can check with the team though and, and get that information for you.
Okay, and a follow up, do we know what we're going to be doing with those savings? And how do they fall into the FY 22 budget? Thank you.
Glad to get that information for you, yes.
Thank you, thank you so much. Ms. Rizzi?
Yeah, so as someone who comes from a tennis family, I am happy to see that tennis courts are getting some love on this list. I can tell you that there is still just one like varsity tennis team that competes in the city. And it is very hard, some, some schools from the counties won't even come to their home court. Because I guess it's not nice enough for them or whatever. And so I am wondering if, you know, for example, the Bouchal project maybe, is that going to be something nice enough? Or either, either the Henderson that are varsity tennis team? And, and perhaps even, you know, it's time to build the programs at all of our schools. But are they going to be nice enough to be home courts for our teams? So that they don't have to like host people at Bird Park or at Battery Park? Yeah, because both of my sons and, and, and other people I'm very, very close to are really into tennis. And, and for young people, it's been a little hard, especially kids who attend RPS. And as far as bathrooms are concerned, I have been, you know, concerned about that too. I tour schools, a lot of times incognito, like undercover, like I just go in and look. And people don't really, I mean, the, the schools my sons have attended, of course, they know who I am. But other schools, I've just snuck in and looked around. And I do see that there are some cases where like bathrooms are still like, not very nice. Like not places I'd want to use the bathroom, right? I would not be happy as a young person having to go into a bathroom and the door doesn't shut properly or there's no soap in there or like, you know, it doesn't look clean or, or welcoming one bit at all. And so I do, you know, it seems like a little thing, but it's really major. You know, you want to feel comfortable at home in the place you attend school. So yeah, I also have some concerns of that, about that. And I hope that that's something that, you know, I, I'm going to do another tour, maybe I'll announce now that I'm on the board. But, you know, I, I think it is important to have those kinds of things in place for our kids. So that they, they know that they're loved and they're welcome. And oh, I wanted to plug too, that tennis is something you can do and social distance, right? You don't have to worry about social distancing with tennis. And so another plug for tennis, yay. All right, thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Rizzi, point well taken. This is a far fetched thought. We may have to get to the point where as we talk about hiring additional people, we may have to have persons that are on staff just to attend to bathrooms throughout the day. We may need to get to that. Because some of our students are wonderful and will put their paper towels in the trash can. Some of them play basketball, throw them in the trash. If it hits the floor, it hits the floor, or they take the toilet paper and they throw it in the ceiling. Then you have your crew chief or whomever else, rather than taking care of the cafeteria, he's in there scraping the ceilings. So we may need to get to the point, just like we pay for cafeteria monitors, to have monitors for our bathrooms. Because Ms. Rizzi is absolutely right. Who wants to use a bathroom that's not clean? And some schools do better with it than others. But that may, we may need to get to the point that we have specialists, engineers, whomever, just to take care of, of, of that need, the water fountains in the bathrooms. Something to think about, I mean, maybe that can fall under COVID as a position, just like we have nurses and social workers, because that's also a part of your mental health too. You have to hold yourself all day and not utilize the bathroom because of the cleanliness. So I think that's a, a point well taken, well taken. Then you have some administrators and crew people who are going to walk the bathrooms, just like you walk the classrooms and the hallways. And some have so much going on, they do or they don't. But who, I agree with Ms. Rizzi totally on that. Ms. Page, I keep taking Ms. Page's time. Ms. Page, please proceed. Is she there?
Yes, I'm here. I had to take off of mute. I'm, I'm just not going to belabor the point, but just to piggyback off of something my colleague, Ms. Door, said about touring the schools with your council representative. That is perfect because we know council holds purse strings. And what better opportunity for them to actually see for themselves the needs of the school district? So I would definitely encourage everyone to tour, tour our buildings with their representative, council representative. Thank you.
Thank you so much. Mr. Young, do we have anyone else listed at this point regarding the C I P?
Superintendent Cameras?
Of course, Mr. Cameras.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I just wanted to note on, on the tennis courts, I think one of the, the benefits of doing Bouchal and Henderson is it gives us a south side hub and a north side hub. So as we think, Ms. Rizzi, about teams coming and home court, we could kind of have a, a south side home and a north side home. And, and my goal is that they are sufficiently beautiful and, and well constructed such that they would serve that purpose for, for varsity teams. Absolutely. After all, this is the, the home of Arthur Ashe, so we should be doing much better when it comes to tennis. And on the bathrooms, I agree with all the comments that were made and we will certainly provide an update. This is something that we have been working on throughout the closure. There is still more work to be done, but we are working very hard to ensure that everything is complete prior to the opening. So that work is, is well underway. But I'm looking forward to updating the board, absolutely.
I have a question, Mr. Young. If that, if no one else is next? I'm, I'm good. Okay, Mr. Cameras. So we have Bouchel in South Side and we have Henderson in North Side. So East End, we have the New Marsh, is that correct? Now we have a tennis courts there?
That's correct.
Okay, and in the West End, we have, Mary Muffet has a nice tennis court, I believe.
I would defer to Ms. Door, I can't recall, but I believe so.
When I pass there, I see people out there playing every day.
They have tennis courts and then Hill, Albert Hill too, but there's some appeals to get the tennis courts refreshed there. But I agree that getting the north and the south is.
But across the board, every school should have that, that has the space for that, some type of outside recreation. Be it hopscotch, basketball, it should be something. But we want to make sure as we talk about equity across the board, there are sites in place with. So I look forward to the site at, at Marsh Elementary with the new tennis courts, two courts. Two courts, Ms. Rizzi, so welcome to the East End, Seventh District. I'm just, forgive me.
Madam Chair.
Any other discussion regarding this, this C I P budget? Anybody else, Mr. Young's listed?
Ms. White?
Ms. White, I'm so sorry, please proceed. Yes, thank you.
Mr. Cameras, I have a question, maybe I'm not seeing it on here, on this list. But is there any, I guess, wants or, or needs for preschools? Because I don't see anything on here for preschools.
I would have.
I don't see windows or anything and they're in bad shape also, the preschools. They don't look like preschools when you actually, and I've toured them also. So I'm just wondering, I don't see anything on the list for them, unless it's down below.
I think Ms. Udesko has additional information.
Yes, Ms. White, thank you. Jason, if you wouldn't mind just scrolling, there are, Maymont will be receiving the rest of its roof replacement. That part has, has aged out. Summer Hill Preschool also receive a roof with this proposal, a roof replacement for the last part of their roof. So those two preschool needs we identified as a priority for this upcoming year. So just wanted to flag those two.
What happened to Mary Scott?
The needs at Mary Scott were not prioritized for this year, but I'm happy to bring back what Mary Scott had on our previous five year plan and see where that lands. I know that, I believe they've had work done, notable work done in fiscal year nineteen and twenty. But I can get what's been completed. I believe they had a significant HVAC work done to date, but I'll get a list of, of that for you.
And there are another one that need windows also.
All right. All right, if there's no more discussion regarding this, Mr. Young, no one else listed?
No ma'am.
Thank you, Mr. Young. So, Mr. Cameras, what's next?
Well, that, that was everything we were hoping to cover tonight, so we have been very efficient. We could try to tackle a piece of the S R funding, if, if you would like to do so. I think maybe starting with the technology piece.
I'm sorry.
Or we could.
Want to go ahead and start with some technology and what's the other choice? Most definitely, technology.
I think technology and then perhaps facilities. But I think we should keep all the academic and S E L stuff for our next meeting. So we can provide a little bit more detail on that.
So question for you, so that we can be prepared for our next meeting, we should look at the information, be prepared with, with what area, did you say again?
So all of the academic, let me, let me scroll up. Okay, so for the stimulus, we have a facilities section.
Okay.
And then we have an instructional section, so that's pages twenty-three and twenty-four. And then we have a social and emotional investment section, that's page twenty-five. And then we have a technology section, which is page twenty-six. We could, if you'd like, go through the technology one tonight. I would like to, to hold the academic and the S E L ones to our next session because we're preparing some additional detail for the board. But I think, I know Ms. Udesko has done a lot of work on the technology front and might be able to provide some additional details for, for these items, even though we had not initially planned to do so tonight, if you would like to do so, Madam Chair.
Excellent. Please, is the board in agreement? Can I see thumbs up or thumbs down? Okay, I think we are in agreement, but some thumbs I don't see. Does that mean some people, okay, there you go. All right, please proceed with tech, with technology. Thank you.
Okay, Ms. Udesko, you want to take it from here?
Sure, I'm happy to. So this past spring and summer, we certainly were able with the board's approval to begin significant investment in technology. So the seven items that you see here are continuation of that investment as well as ways to continue to think about how to maintain that moving forward. Again, the federal stimulus does need to be used for things that are related to COVID, learning, learning loss recovery and potentially virtual spaces as well. So that's why you're going to continue to see things related to.
Um, so that's why you're gonna continue to see things related to um, uh, Chromebooks and laptops. So, uh, the first item, which is three million dollars over two years, so a million for immediate investment, and then two million um, over the course of next year, is to do a laptop refresh for all of our teachers and other staffs. It, it's our goal to move to a replacement cycle of every three years, um, knowing that devices just simply become outdated and, and folks need a new one. And our records show that right now, by the end of next school year, we will have about three thousand devices uh, for adults that will hit that three-year mark. An adult device costs about a thousand dollars, um, and so that's why we have this at the three-million mark. We'd use a million of it between now and um, the start of school um, to begin to cycle out folks who have hit the three-year mark. Um, and then do so over the course of next year, um, as that occurs. Plus, of course, have devices available, uh, should someone have um, an issue um, with camera, et cetera. Um, in terms of the student Chromebooks, um, so a Chromebook uh, costs about uh, three hundred and fifty dollars uh, roughly, um, with, for both the device as well as some of the warranty uh, that we place on it. And so when we're looking at twelve hundred dollars um, uh, right here, um, what we wanna be thinking about is any accounting for loss um, that we might have for students who are using Chromebooks now, and begin to start that replacement cycle in twenty-one, twenty-two. Um, at this point, we're fortunate that we've become a one-to-one division, and so we want to be able um, to maintain that. Um, to date, we've bought about fifteen thousand um, or so Chromebooks, so those are in their first year. Um, and so as we're thinking about what's needed each year, I will note that um, local investment, notable local investment is going to be needed here because our fifteen thousand Chromebooks are all on the same replacement cycle. Um, and so within three years, we will certainly hit a cliff of needing to replace them all, uh, should we want to stay on um, on a one-to-one uh, a model. So you see, we have put about one point five million dollars in fiscal year twenty-three, which begins to address that cliff, um, and that, that replacement, but um, additional local investment would be needed um, uh, down the road to keep us, um, to keep us fresh. Um, you'll see one point five million dollars for school internet infrastructure enhancement. Um, the board approved um, initial funding for this work um, back uh, in the winter, fall, winter of this year, um, so that we knew that we'd be ready to go, um, when we came back to school in person. This additional one point five million dollars will allow us to continue to address access points once all the kids are uh, in school. We can map it out at about eighty percent of what do you think this infrastructure will look like, but it's when the kids are actually all in the building, and there's twenty-five kids in a class working on their computer, where we'll begin to be able to identify um, spots where um, additional access points um, will help ensure um, a seamless, a seamless access. We have fifty thousand dollars here for some additional uh, technology at the Welcome Center um, for when we're doing um, home language uh, survey um, and initial language assessments of our students. You'll then see um, the next three sections, um, we shift away from hardware and uh, move into some of the um, contracts and related services that just come along with being a one-to-one division and having this type of technology. So the first is maintaining our current investment in um, cybersecurity and internet safety. And this includes um, a couple of things. So for example, um, we have a, an internet safety filter called iBoss um, that we would want to continue to use, that helps filter out um, uh, sites that we wouldn't want students on, or uh, things like that. We also have um, a service called Gaggle, uh, which uh, is able to kind of track what students are accessing online and sends us notifications um, if there are um, uh, either accessing um, certain sites, if there is potentially um, images um, on the screen that could be concerning, or text um, between students in a, in a chat, perhaps. Um, we receive a notification and then are able to follow up um, as appropriate, and we would wanna be able to continue um, to protect our students in that way. Um, and then finally, there's some investment here around a cloud migration. Um, we currently have physical servers um, that we update and maintain, and we want, as we're moving to a more technological division, to, to take this into the cloud. So, moving to a software as a service versus having physical servers. And, and this also um, uh, supports teleworking and of course, disaster recovery. Um, if we have a power surge and you lose the physical server, um, you've lost everything versus having it um, in the cloud. So we think those are some pretty important pieces. Um, we have two hundred thousand additional dollars for Chromebook configuration support. Um, this is our technology vendor, they're called TIG, Technology Integrative um, Services. Um, and with just having now twenty-five thousand Chromebooks, uh, one for every student, just the cost of the support that they provide uh, would increase. Um, so for example, uh, right now, they go to every school every week um, to trade out any broken Chromebooks that then they fix and bring back, but always making sure that schools have what they need. So those types of services. And then the last one here is a note towards maintaining cell phone and hotspots. Um, but I do wanna note that this is um, uh, is something that I, I wanna be sure the board is very clear on about what um, this would allow for. So, for four hundred thousand, we could maintain about half of the cell phones that we've um, given to staff right now. Obviously, right now, staff um, doing remote work are using uh, cell phones much more, and many of those folks won't need cell phones uh, when we go back in person. Uh, they'll be able to use office phones. Um, but many people will still need, need the cell phone, um, and probably should have had one along. Um, and so this will allow us to keep that. But hotspot maintenance is something that we need to discuss, um, I believe as a, as a a board or um, as a community. This right now would only allow for about, um, the maintenance of about one thousand hotspots um, over the course of a year. They're about twenty dollars a month per hotspot, so about two hundred and fifty dollars um, a year per hotspot. And right now, we have out close to eighty-five hundred or so hotspots. Um, and so, we would be dramatically changing our strategy around internet access. These would be something that kids could check out from school to take home, but we would not be maintaining um, and anyone who needs a hotspot um, at home could have one. It would need to be for, for special projects, um, et cetera. For us to maintain, of course, our current um, hotspots, if, if we said we had eighty-five hundred and and they're about uh, two fifty a year, this is about a, a nearly two and a half million dollar line. So we'd be needing to think about that quite differently. Um, but this allows us to continue internet access in a small way.
All right. Going, some more? Is it?
Oh, I'll, I'll stop there. Thank you.
Are there any questions of uh, Ms. Udesko? Mr. Young, what do you have?
Yes, ma'am. Uh, Dr. Harris Mohammed, yours truly, then Ms. White, and then Ms. Rizzi.
Thank you so much, Dr. Harris Mohammed. The floor is yours.
Yes, ma'am. Thank you, Madam Chair. Ms. Udesko, I have two questions. Um, I'm curious to know the current brand that we're using to purchase the laptops at a thousand dollars per staff or per student. And then the second question, I just need some clarity, if you can help with this clarity. The superintendent stated last week that about twenty-two thousand, twenty-three, twenty-four thousand, no, twenty-two thousand, I believe, in the budget PowerPoint presentation of Chromebooks were given out to students. And this evening, I am hearing you say twenty-five thousand Chromebooks were delivered to, or provided to students. So I, I need some clarity for everyone who's watching. How many students do we have currently enrolled at Richmond Public Schools? And if it's not over twenty-five thousand, then where is, where are the other Chromebooks?
Well, I can't give you the exact, yeah, yeah.
And the numbers that the superintendent sharing do not match our current enrollment. So can you help us understand where those numbers are coming from? Thank you.
Absolutely. Well, I can't um, give you the exact number of our enrollment, although, Mr. Cameras, maybe you could pull it up while I'm talking. Um, I'm guessing it's around twenty-three thousand, twenty-two-ish thousand. Um, we bought a ten percent cushion of Chromebooks um, to ensure that we always had access. So we bought about, we have, well, we bought about fifteen-ish thousand Chromebooks. We had Chromebooks on hand. We have given out twenty-two thousand Chromebooks. Every student has a Chromebook. But we had many Chromebooks before COVID. Um, those were given to students, and then we purchased an additional ten percent cushion um, above and beyond the, the enrollment, um, to ensure that we always had swap-out availability. So for example, right now, every school, based on uh, size, has between ten to twenty Chromebooks in their main office, so that any family can come in and not need to go to the mobile help desk. They can do an immediate swap-out. And then that's what TIG does every week. They come every week, they take any of those broken's back, they fix them, they bring them back the next week, and they make sure that the school maintains their cushion. So that's why the, the number that we purchased is not going to, is intentionally not the number. We certainly didn't wanna have a one break and not have one to swap it for.
Thank you for that clarification. Appreciate it.
Absolutely.
Thank you so much. Uh, Mr. Young?
Uh, thank you, Madam Chair. Uh, just three, three questions, two for uh, Ms. Udesko and uh, and then one for you and my colleagues. But specifically, if, Michelle, if I heard you correctly, FY twenty-four, we're gonna need to allocate four and a half million dollars for new Chromebooks, correct? Approximately?
Uh, Chromebooks generally have a three-year life cycle. Um, so, yes, if all of our current Chromebooks last us until fiscal year twenty-three and need replacement, then yes, there will be a notable local investment that will be needed um, down the road. And again, there, there may be, i- ideally, we would love, although it's very challenging right now, we would love to get off of this massive cycle of replacement. Nobody wants to have to replace fifteen to twenty thousand Chromebooks at the same time. You would hope that it was spread out, but we also had the very good fortune of being able to purchase that many Chromebooks this past year.
Yeah, I agree. I just uh, wanted to confirm uh, the numbers and uh, and the FY twenty-three, twenty-four seems like a long time from now. It really isn't, so we, we need to be thinking about that significant investment, four and a half million. Uh, my second question regards, uh, and you may or may not have this right now, but uh, what percentage of our Chromebooks in a, in a month are reported e- either lost or, or broken? Do we know approximately the number on it?
Lost is very few, um, because we track those um, uh, very closely. Um, broken, it really ranges kind of what broken means, but we did purchase um, the accident uh, the warranty on each of them. Broken might be a cracked screen, in which case you can easily swap that out. It could be a key that's stuck or comes off. Um, um, so I'm not, eh, I'm not quite sure as it's kind of a big bucket um, of how many are, are broken, but um, I can look into that more specifically.
Thank you. And, and tha- thanks, Michelle. And then, uh, and then lastly, my question, and Madam Chair, it is a this is a big question that won't be settled this evening, so let me acknowledge that upfront. Uh, we have uh, spent a lot of time as a board, a lot of time talking about uh, culture in our buildings and uh, uh, when we were in, when we were in the buildings, and specifically, so many of our, our CEOs, I, your our uh, building leaders or principals, pointing out how uh, some of them would characterize some of uh, the CEOs in my district have said a hundred percent of their problems can be attributed to the cell phones. Uh, and uh, and so, if, in the past, we've talked about uh, some of our interest in addressing that, building out a policy. Uh, it, it just seems to me, this conversation was, was an impetus for me to uh, introduce, re-introduce this conversation, and it seems to me that now, because we are out of our buil- out of the buildings, and uh, I'm not naive to the fact that we have just a few other things going on uh, to address, but I, I wonder if now, while we are out of the buildings as a board, along with the administration uh, in our in our folks, of course, on the front lines, we should be uh, given a lot of thought to uh, what we have already labored on, specifically, uh, cellphone policy for students uh, and, and culture, and uh, and the, the bridge or the connection, it seems to me, is that when we do go back, obviously, we will retain the Chromebooks as uh, as an invaluable tool, and they would arguably address what uh, some persons on the board are concerned, concerned about, i.e. losing uh, connectivity with, with families if we were to limit cellphone use. So, sorry, that was long, but I, I hope everybody appreciates what I'm trying to get at, and hope that we would consider using the next, uh, next few months to think about our, our cellphone policy, once we get back in the buildings.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Young. Ms. White?
Uh, yes, I had just two general questions. Um, you were saying about the return of the uh, Chromebooks. Is there any type of reimbursement or incentive program when you return that amount of Chromebooks?
Um, I'm sorry, can you clarify what you mean by return?
Uh, well, we, we have to get new Chromebooks. You just said within three years. So where would, where would those Chromebooks go? Or would they go back to the vendor that you uh, actually, you know, uh, brought them from? Or would you get any type of reimbursement, or a little bit money off for the new ones?
Got it. Like a surplusing program for outdated assets. Um, I know we definitely surplus old assets. I can check um, for what's in place for Chromebooks. We've certainly never had this many, so I'll, I'll look into that.
And my next question is just, uh, it just came up to, it came, and it just came to my mind. And I just wanted to know, does the Chromebooks that we have, does it allow our Spanish-speaking students or any student that's uh, actually uh, speaks a different language, that they can take it and do their homework? You know, it changes into their actual language, where they can do our lessons, uh, and their homework at home?
Yes, there's translation, uh-huh, including like, for example, on our website, where you can translate um, to read and then write in other languages, yes.
Okay, thank you.
All right, we have Ms. Rizzi.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Uh, my question has to do with cybersecurity and internet, internet safety. Um, recently, we had a fairly long discussion about, you know, children being able to access sites that were not appropriate. Um, and, you know, there was pretty, I, I, I mean, I saw actually uh, several like, parent um, problems, and you know, my son also has a Chromebook um, with young people being able to access things that aren't necessarily school-appropriate. And that was very recently. Um, and also, you know, I'd asked a question about technology that would allow us, or not us, but you know, official, someone, building-level principals, maybe, remote access to Chromebooks. Just, you know, if there's an emergency situation where a kid really needs to get off of something. Um, you know, because I said I worked for a school system locally, like close to us, that actually had that technology. Um, I also have seen a, you know, some teachers who are frustrated about their inability to access things on YouTube now. Um, I know for a fact that there is a lot of really, really good. I know for a fact that there is a lot of really, really good educational material available via YouTube. And so, is there, has that been worked out? Are our teachers now able to have access to what they want while at the same time limiting access, you know, from the children or, you know, of the children's ability to access things they shouldn't be looking at?
Mr. Cameras, can I punt this to you and Dr. Epp, who I know have had some recent conversations about where this is? I would hate to not be the most up to date.
Sure. Dr. Epp, do you want to take it?
Sure. Thank you. Ms. Rizzi, so we've had ongoing discussions and are continuing to monitor access to inappropriate sites. We have adjusted within YouTube. I concur that YouTube is an invaluable resource for our teachers. Teachers do have access to YouTube and what they need to access. Our students, however, we have adjusted our filter settings. There's a filter setting in YouTube that we can adjust. So, we've adjusted for strict filter for elementary age and a moderate filter. These are both educational filters, so they filter for educational content to the secondary level. Whenever you're adjusting filters, there are some, you know, bumps. And so, I think some teachers initially experienced some blockage, but that's been addressed to my, to our knowledge and to my, the IT team's knowledge. And we're continuing to explore other avenues for internet safety, including, I believe, the software you're referencing in terms of being able to monitor screens. We are exploring that as a solution. There are certainly pros and cons to that, but we are exploring that software as a solution as well. Mr. Cameras, is there anything else you would add that I'm forgetting?
If you want to just add, we're looking at things like safety...
Looks like my internet has frozen.
If Dr. Epp's internet is stuck. There are other platforms which can offer some additional functionality to help protect students. All of these things have pros and cons, so we're working through them. We actually just had a meeting earlier this week with our head of technology, the head of our ITRTs, Dr. Epp, myself, to go through a series of recommendations that we received from some parents about things that they wanted us to look at. We're trying to balance all those with things we've heard from teachers to try to come up with a kind of a thread the needle between those two and come up with another set of adjustments that we can make as we go into the second semester.
So, then, is it possible that that budget line item number will change, given all of this?
I want to see what comes out of that working group. So, I do think it's something we should keep an eye on if there are additional software packages that we need to invest in for these purposes. So, I think that's a good point. We'll keep an eye on that, and I'll update the board if we think that needs to be adjusted.
Thank you.
All right. If there are any other questions, do we have any more questions or discussion, Mr. Young?
Yes, ma'am. Dr. Harris Mohammed.
All right. Dr. Harris Mohammed?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Mr. Dusko, I might have missed it when I asked what was the current brand of the Chromebooks that we were using, and what do we plan to do? What is the plan? And what do we plan to do within the plan with the tablets that we have? And who has the tablets? Who are given tablets?
Yeah, thank you. I jotted down your question about what was the model of the adult laptop, right? You mean, not the Chromebook, the adult laptop?
Correct. The adult laptop. Yes, ma'am.
Yep. I wrote that down, so I'll get, I'll provide that for you.
And let me just, my rationale for that is because I've seen a bit of evidence out there because of the pandemic that we're currently in across the country, there were companies that were providing pretty good deals to school divisions, you know, to ensure that teachers and students received the laptops and the Chromebooks. But if you can provide us with the brand, I really appreciate it. Thank you.
Absolutely. And then in terms of the tablets, we've gathered those back from families to make sure that the students were using Chromebooks instead of a tablet. In some very rare instances, especially at the preschool level, families opted to keep the tablet because of the touchscreen nature. So, all of the tablets are currently with TIG being cleaned up, being, you know, just re-put back into our asset inventory. We also, in the short term, gave a tab, five tablets to every school for coaches or administrators to use so that they could watch something on a screen and type and just kind of be able to almost have a dual screen. So, there's a little bit of them being used right now, but then we'll be, you know, deferring to the academic office to be sure, once we're back in person, that those are in classes and part of our instructional strategy.
I appreciate that.
We have anyone else, Mr. Young?
No, ma'am.
All right. If that is it of this point, discussing the budget, I think we've had a great productive work session this evening, and I appreciate it so much. And I could follow it better line by line, section by section, city-state versus stimulus. So, I appreciate that on the part of the administration for putting that together for us in that manner. The next budget meeting will be on Tuesday, February 9th. So, it is now time to go into closed sessions, and for those who are viewing, we will... Yes. I'm going to ask for the, I'm going to ask for the motion.
But Ms. Gibson has first opportunity to speak.
Who?
Ms. Gibson.
Okay. Thank you. I'm sorry. Ms. Gibson?
I had a couple of budget things that were not included in the presentation that we reviewed that I wanted to note. One is regarding our own school board budget. I think it would be good to take a look at that budget. And actually, even in this year, you know, we'd have, obviously, not spending money on our meals, and so, I wanted to see if my colleagues were amenable to transferring that line item from our school board meals into our discretionary funds to allow the board to make use of those funds in our district in alternate ways. So, I'd like to put that on the table. And then, I also would like to look more specifically at some of the position allocations. I request that the administration upload the document that they shared most recently with the, some of the central office positions, so that the public has access to that document as well. And, you know, there are just some positions that I just want to make sure that I have clarity on. One is the Director of Process Improvements. I want to make sure I'm clear on the distinction on the, on that role versus what our audit team is doing. I would like to consider increasing our staff in the audit department. This is something that we have discussed, and I don't know if it might make sense to reallocate that position into the audit team. You know, we have a lot of work to do just to make sure that we're crossing all our Ts and dotting our Is. I almost said that wrong, by the way. But, you know, I think that that is a department that really could use a lot of support, and I'd like to see how we can grow our, grow the team there. And then finally, on the budget document that was presented, the large budget document, I noticed that some of the budget codes are not there anymore. So, particularly like the page that has all of the object codes. So, I would like to request that those are added back in just for consistency for year to year. And I'd encourage my colleagues just to take a look at, you know, at our overall org chart to make sure that we think that, because, you know, we're talking about the budget, it's not even, you know, it's also, you know, where those positions are allocated in the budget. Those are decisions that we make at this time as well. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Gibson. And I think we have someone else, Mr. Young? I see three now.
Yes. Ms. Door, next.
Hi. Just an update for the board. The Finance Committee, we decided to suspend the Finance Committee during the budget season since we're meeting so often talking about the budget, and since we had, we're assembling new committees and we need to approve that as a board. We had a committee meeting like the day after the committees were assigned, so we just got an update from our auditor. We did not make any decisions other than to encourage him to bring what he brought to us before the board. And I believe Ms. Hadasco, who was at the meeting, brought that information to the Chair and Vice Chair. But one of our requests was that Mr. Parker, our auditor, bring his budget request for the auditing department before the body so that we can review that as a board. So, I suspect that is on the list, but just wanted to give a brief update for the benefit of my colleagues.
And thank you so very much regarding that. With the committees, you will receive a condensed, every item, rather than getting three or four different emails. Ms. Collins and I meet on Fridays. We're putting everything together regarding the committees, regarding the line items that you have for discretionary funds, the calendar for the month, so everybody would know who's meeting, when and where. We do have a meeting coming up on the 18th that we need three board members to participate. And please do fill that information in. Kim has, and Ms. Collins has a form that's utilized for committees, and then we'll have it documented. It's, you can fill it in and send it to Ms. Collins. So, we're going to send you all that, I hope, by Monday, depending upon how much we get done tomorrow. But so, we can have documentation, and also, we won't have to keep asking, and then it's a lot, we get so many emails a day. But all of this, I hope to be all attachments on one form. So, thank you for that. And then when we meet, when it's time to give budget, excuse me, when it's time to give committed reports, hopefully, everyone has had a chance to read it, and then we can just key in with questions as needed. Mr. Young, is there anyone else before we go into close?
No, ma'am, and I have the motion if you're ready, ma'am.
Yes, sir. Thank you so much. Isn't he an awesome vice chair? Thank you. Thank you.
You're making the head swell. You're making the head swell.
I appreciate you.
Pursuant to Section 2.2-3711, Subsection A, Subsection 1 of the Code of Virginia, 1950 is amended. A move of the School Board of the City of Richmond convening closed session to consider the assignment, performance, salaries, and contract of specific school board employees.
Is there a second? Don't see anyone in the chat? Is there a second? A hand raise, please? One or the other? Dr. Harris Mohammed, please?
Second.
Thank you. It is the moved and properly second that we move into close. Madam Clerk? We're ready for the roll.
Yes, ma'am. Ms. Door?
Yes.
Ms., excuse me, Ms. White?
Yes.
Ms. Gibson?
Yes.
Mr. Young?
Aye.
Ms. Rizzi?
Yes.
Dr. Harris Mohammed?
Yes.
Ms. Burke?
Yes.
Ms. Page?
Yes.
Ms. Jones?
Yes.
You are now in close.
So, we'll see everyone back at this site after we finish and close. Thank you all so much.